Good evening, welcome to the Eastlime Board of Finance special meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 2nd. The time is 5:33. I'd like to call the meeting to order and begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I consider it valid for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great and just as a rule.
Next on the agenda is delegations where members of the public can speak to any item on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Tonight, we are dedicated to budget deliberations. We've spent a number of meetings with the department heads throughout town and examined budgets. We've, you know, gone through a lot of, going through lots of pages. And so, we're here tonight to see what we can do to fine tune the budget. Since we have a large contingency from the Board of Ed here, I thought that might be a good place to start. And then, that way, you don't have to sit through all the other, so. From the time that the Board of Ed first presented their budget, that was a point in time where there were still a lot of unknowns, including things like what the pension contribution number would be, what the healthcare number would be. And so, what we've tried to do in a couple of discussions is just figure out whether there were other things that became known since the Board of Ed developed their budget. And also, really, in the spirit of the town and the Board of Ed working together and trying to, you know, really put our heads together and find a way to reduce the impact of a tax increase on our residents, we've looked at some things that we think can further reduce the proposed budget. Some of the things that we have spoken about are, you know, things that most people are not going to see or feel. It's whether the electricity usage is different, whether the fuel and transportation savings, and just, you know, a number of fine tuning. And I think, in the spirit of looking at the respective sizes of the budgets, even though we came to this, with the town having a big percentage increase, bigger than the Board of Ed, because the Board of Ed's budget is so much larger than the town's, you know, we do look to them to try to do what they can to help us there. So, in that spirit, and in great appreciation for the hard work and fine tuning, I would like to propose that we cut the Board of Ed budget by 1.1 million. And I think that while this is difficult, I think that because of all of those savings that were identified as things that we didn't know at the beginning, whether it was the health insurance increase was much smaller than had originally been predicted, pension contribution, the pension board switched from a 10, five-year amortization to a 10-year amortization, so that reduced the amount that came in. And there were some changes that the Board of Ed has gone through with nursing staff, and some of that has only just come about, and we think there's going to be savings there. And so, all told, I think the 1,100,000 cut is something that won't impact students, won't impact, you know, teachers, and I'd look to see whether we can get any, you know, if the Board of Ed would like to speak to it all. I'm happy to hear their comments, and...
Sure. I think in light of, you know, as you mentioned, decent, thank you for sharing and clarifying those pieces, you know, the health insurance was a huge savings and help this year, the pension savings as well, moving the project money that we had at 250,000 out into capital, there's another big savings. So, adding that all up, and then the additional work that we did on the board's side, we feel positive about that number. We can get to that number, that 1.1, and we're, like you said, we're not going to have an impact on staff or an impact on students. So, we appreciate the support with that.
So, I've made a motion.
Denise, can I ask a question? Is that 1.1 inclusive of the changes that we saw from the, from the health insurance, the pension?
Yes.
That's on additional 1.1.
So, it's a total from the proposed budget?
Okay. We just got to highlight those, what those were again?
Sure. So, we have a adjustment from their budget of 288,000 reduction, a reduction in retiree health insurance of 191,884, middle school sports increase 10,000. We had, so this savings in contracted services of 17,000, moving the building improvements out of the operating over to capital, and then some further reductions through putting off some of their projects that, once again, I think Dan's discussion, starting off with this is going to, you know, is it a want or is it a need? And so, I think there are a couple of things that they determined would be a more of a want than a need, or immediate need, so.
Yeah, and spot on, and to add, you know, the electricity, natural gas, fuel, we found some savings, more savings in there, you know, over time, since we presented back in January, we found quite a bit of savings there. The nursing piece was unique. We thought we were going to have to add more money into that, but come to find out, it looks like we're going to demonstrate some savings there. So, that's a good thing. You know, we're, as I mentioned last time we presented, we're sharing a nursing supervisor. That's actually going to net us a savings, we're sharing with Waterford. Looks like we're going to save more money than we thought with that higher splitting the cost. So, we were able to come backtrack and take that out and actually show, demonstrate savings, you know, with that. So, that's a good thing. We went back and looked at the school budgets, you know, some more. We were able to find an additional roughly almost 50,000 there to do a few more reductions. And again, that big one of moving the project, that building project lineup, 250, out into capital helps as well. So, all in total, it's, you know, it will, it will work. We can make it work.
Yeah, I went into this going, I thought we were, going into the year, I was scared of the, based on the inflationary time we're in, that you're able to keep it where you're, where it is.
Yeah, it's, thanks, yeah. It's, you know, and the grant money that we have taken on has really helped us out, you know, quite a bit for the coming year as well, that little over a million dollars of grant funding. So, yeah, we're, we feel healthy about where that would land us on the Board of Ed's side.
And if we could get it to cut by that 1.1 million, it really puts you in a, you've done a great job with that compared to a lot of the school systems that are surrounding us that really, you know, tried to incorporate all the positions that had been added with the ARPA and all the other federal grants, so.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that puts our increase right around three, I think three, I think it's around 394. Yeah, it's right around under, under 4%. So, that's, I think that's pretty good for the Board of Ed, since we had a 6.8 increase last year, and the work we've done to help out.
And so Denise, what is the dollar figure then? Because I did some math, but I'd like to hear what your math comes up to.
Okay, so, their original budget. I'm going to have to go back to zero.
Richard, I think you just got the sheet.
Yeah.
I think Kevin made copies. The bottom portion is the new that we recently came up with. So, if you focus on that, health insurance savings down, that would give you the new numbers.
So, from the original minus 1,100,000, where are we then?
60,000, 24,675.
Sorry, go ahead.
60, 60 million?
Mm-hmm.
24,675. There it is, that's one hundred?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. The percentage, I think it was a little bit lower, it's 3.87.
Yep, you're right. Overall, something increase.
60024, 675. Yeah.
Okay, make a motion that we approve the Board of Ed budget upcoming fiscal year for 60,000, 24,675.
Through a cut of the original budget. I don't know whether we have to have that in the...
We just hold out the council.
Yeah, okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 600. While the Board of Ed is still here, do we want to talk about the capital? So, I think, we mentioned the other night, we had the privilege of viewing the Eastlime High School, and we, there were a number of people there, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and I, you know, I think it was an eye-opener for a lot of people. I think it's amazing what the school gets done with the resources that it has. But we know that, as every budget year is tight, you know, this one is too, and we appreciate, we're just trying to spread the paint around a little bit and see if there are other projects that while we definitely see need being done, maybe some of them could be pushed off a little bit. So, in the education budget of their capital requests, we would like to see if we can't push a couple of those out of, you know, the first year capital budget. Now, I think we've seen the aquatics center roof. That seems to be not just a want, but it seems like it's a need because it's a safety issue with things falling from the ceiling. So, I would say that definitely needs to stay in and be attended to right away. And then, we've got the roof replacement. There's two, both Lilyby Haynes and Niantic Center School, both are looking for new roofs. Lilyby Haynes, 4,362,500, and Niantic Center School for 1,265. So, I think that if we were able to push off one of the roofs a year, it would help in first year. And I think it's the Lilyby Haynes that would most likely make sense to push off because, no?
Niantic Center.
Niantic Center, okay, push off, sorry, because then we're, because you were thinking of, yep. So, if we could push off the Niantic Center for 1,265 and move that out, I think that would help in our immediate capital needs.
Just for the record, too, for other Board of Finance members that might not know or remember, there is money at the town level two for the aquatics roof that was collected years ago when the roof was built. I think there was some incorrectness in how it was assembled and built, so they obtained some money from the company that had put the roof on. I don't know the exact amount, but it's over $100,000, so we would want to apply that to the cost of that roof as well, to help out with the overall, overall fee.
We need a motion for that. Any, I don't know, just on another, on the other, just thought, is there any, would be any possible savings in packaging them together? I don't know if we're allowed to do that.
Chris, you want to?
Yeah, come on up for a second. That's a good question.
I don't want to be restricted by, you know, grants or the state or something, but I don't, you know.
Yeah, that's a tough question.
Bundle things together.
Yeah, it's a tough question to answer just for two reasons. One is the aquatics center roof's standing seam metal, and then the other is you're more traditional.
The two schools.
And it's two different buildings.
Oh, we're talking two school roofs. If we did the two school roofs and bundled those, so you did all three, but you bundled the Niantic Center.
Maybe just be subject to look at the contract times, if you can do it.
We'd have to talk to the state. We'd have to talk to the state. I thought you meant some groups.
So, maybe, you know, the idea with the contractor, this is phase one, and this is phase two, something like that.
We'd have to talk to the state.
Yeah.
It's very particular things.
And for the schools, there's state reimbursement for those roofs?
Forty percent, yeah, just over 40%. For the pool roof, too, because we have PE students that utilize that, so.
So, these figures are reflective before the 40% is put in?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so that makes it a little bit more palatable.
Yes. And if you still have the budget slides that we shared, there's a slide in there that shows the exact reimbursement that we would be, we would obtain for all three roofs.
Can I ask a question of Kevin? Is there any advantage, I assume this is going to be bonded, whatever we decide on, is there any advantage to bonding one big thing this year as opposed to two smaller ones, one this year and one next year?
I have a theory. No, I don't see the interest rate drop and that much.
And there'll be other bonding next year.
Next year, it's still a straight in there.
Yeah. And as we move away from ban financing, you know, so it's not like we would go out and just do a ban for this. All right, do we have a motion to?
Before the motion, the 250 that was moved from the operating budget to the capital budget, it's not listed on here at all?
Nope, that will be...
A separate motion for that?
Yeah, we will make that motion to put the 250 into the capital budget for...
This is a potential risk there.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any way to put off any of the technology and other capital items down under district wide? Can some of that be removed?
I think that's under the acquisition plan.
Yeah, the district-wide technology, 500,000 line item.
The only issue with that is then we back up our rollover of replacements, and we get, it's going to hurt us the following year because now we'll have a larger need to purchase for, for back, we've got them on a cycle for each grade level, K to 12 for device, device purchasing. So, it would backlog us.
Just on that, just on that 500,000, that's been recurring, but it was paid with, like they were saying, the lease program slash acquisition program, so it wasn't really showing up here because we were leasing it. So, or the idea is to get away from that lease, so that's why we put it here in the capital, so.
And that saves us another 100,000 out of our budget as well by doing that, for that acquisition, moving that out. So, we pay it back each year 100,000.
That's in the 1.1.
That's in the 1.1.
Yep.
It scribbled in the bond.
Yeah, we already noted on that.
I reconciled it with 1.1, all right. I just wanted to make sure that was noted.
Okay, so, do I have a motion then?
Or?
Or, well, there'll be two, the reducing the Niantic Center School roof replacement out of the capital plan for this year.
I'll move that we reduce the, or that we eliminate the Niantic Center School from the capital, roof project from the capital plan.
Any further discussion?
Just, just concerned that it's going to be a lot more money the following year. It's something, the construction industry is, you know, is just, it's exploding, you know, prices are exploding, so just want everybody to be aware of that.
I think I tend to agree with Paul on that, that next year, we're going to be in a crunch again for one reason or another, and it gets back to the operating kicking the can down the road.
And all those in favor of removing the Niantic Center School project from this year's capital budget signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So, motion carries 420. And next, as we discussed, was capital that was moving out of the operating budget from Board of Ed. Most of the projects that they'd identified really seemed to belong in the capital plan versus operating. And by having them in the capital plan, it would reduce the increase to the Board of Ed's operating budget. And due to state minimum budget requirements, we can't decrease the Board of Ed's budget from year to year, so we accept under false sorts of extraordinary circumstances. So, to the extent that we put that in its right place, it helps us going forward. So, do I have a motion to add to, add the 250,000 to the capital plan that came out of the Board of Ed's operating plan?
So, move.
Do I have a second? Second. Any further discussions or questions? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 600. So, I think that's it for Board of Ed, right? Great, excellent. Thank you guys so much. Great, great job, great work. So, I think the best way to go about this is probably just working right through the budget book, and if anyone has suggestions, you know, then we can vote on it right then and there, rather than try to keep track of and go back. So, I think we just keep going forward that way unless someone has a preference to do it another way.
I will offer, before we begin, I can print people a larger book if you need it. So, just want to have that out there, in case someone can't see the phone. Okay, no takers.
I think we all feel like we have enough paper, and boy, does this make me want to include in the budget some software for the board docs or something.
Careful what you say because they're probably listening to this to see if it's the budget. Next year, I'm sure.
Okay, so first is 101, the First Selectmen's Budget. Does show an 8.9% increase, but I personally don't have any thoughts on decreasing it anywhere other than perhaps the ad hoc committee and 295. You know, looking at what we've expended so far year-to-date, I don't think we're going to get, you know, to that number. So, unless we know for sure, we've got some ad hoc committee expenses, it's not, it's not a huge amount, but if we, if we reduced it 1,000, it'd be, and Dan, if you have any...
You know, I'm, I think we go into that, that reduction, yep.
Is there any way to reduce postage? I mean, can you mail it, mail stuff? I guess everything has to go first class.
Legal obligations.
Sometimes that's the only way you can send stuff to the state or to, to some local organizations.
Denise?
Yeah?
I do have one other line, 311 for the grant writer. Having been a literature searcher and using databases, knowing that there are foundation databases and databases that are specifically designed around grants, and knowing the skills of a librarian as being able to do personal interviews to, or client interviews as such, to be able to get the best keywords and know the best indexing to use to find potential grants, I would propose, and if nobody else agrees, that's fine, but moving that 12,000 into the library and having a professional searcher be able to find the grants rather than just having somebody that may have written a few grants but doesn't necessarily know all the databases that may be available.
You know, it's, grant writing, it's one of those areas where, you know, if you can put a little money into it, hopefully you get a lot of money out of it, kind of like an amplifier tube. You know, you put a little electricity in, you get a lot out.
Yep.
And, you know, to rely on someone going to the library and trying to hit their databases, I mean, in theory, yeah, that sounds like it might work, but I think someone, if we can have money to hire someone, you know, part-time... have money to hire someone, you know, part-time to, that's done it before and really knows the ins and outs of it, I just think there's a great benefit that we can see if it's, if it's done right, so I would hope that we would leave that alone.
I'm not disagreeing with hiring somebody on a part-time basis. I'm just kind of putting the qualifications around somebody that might be able to get to the best bang for the buck for that little bit of money that is being invested as a pilot. So no, I'm not expecting people here to go to the library.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, if, how would it really work? You need someone that can sit down and, I mean, maybe as part of their work, they would go to the library and talk, you know, use some of the databases that are available and do the research, you know, the benefit from someone there, but I think you'd need someone that can, that's really gone through the process, can research what grants are out there, and to the extent possible, really endeavor to, to put these grants together, make them viable, so we can start getting the benefit of the money that's out there. That's my thought.
I think, I agree with Rich that the qualifications he mentioned are important, but if we put this money in the library, then that person would report to somebody in the library, and I don't think that that's what we should do. I think it's better if whoever is hired reports to the town rather than to the library. I think it might be a good idea from a policy standpoint to have a committee to hire this person that Rich could be on since he understands the qualifications, but I really would not like to see it moved, like I said, because I don't think the library, the administration in the library is qualified to, to really monitor this kind of thing.
Good points from both of you. I think I would agree that having the reporting structure here makes more sense because it's too very different, but hopefully if the reporting structures are here, obviously we would encourage that person to take advantage of the resources, you know, that the folks in the library could have.
It works. Like I said, I, just a thought from a previous slide.
Yep. And I should preface my statement when I said I didn't see much in the First Selectmen's. I just had a couple of little things that were just, I didn't think really affected the office.
Right, appreciate that.
Could we go back to the ad hoc and make a vote, because I think it'll keep things going smoother if we vote, so I was looking.
I have to move the First Selectmen's Budget line two ninety-five to two thousand dollars and one thousand dollar cut.
Yep.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excellent. No opposed, motion carries six zero zero. My next cut is until welfare and general assistance. Does someone have anything before that?
Did someone read that motion in a second? Sorry, I wrote that.
I made the motion.
Motion's second.
And I think Rich seconded.
Okay, what's the department number that you're on to next?
So it's still in the First Selectmen's Budget, but it is three hundred dash two nine two, and it's, the Board of Selectmen's Budget has it at one thousand two hundred. I was looking at the, what's been expended to date, and it doesn't appear that there's been anything there, so I was thinking.
Here's the, this is as of today.
Yeah. Yeah, so maybe we could drop that to five hundred just in case.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion to reduce?
Which line are you talking about?
So it is welfare, general assistance.
Two ninety.
Two ninety-two. So take it from one, one thousand two hundred down to, down seven hundred to five hundred dollars.
Can I move to reduce line two nine two, welfare, general assistance by five hundred to seven hundred dollars?
No, the other way around.
Yeah.
Reduce it by seven hundred to five hundred.
To five hundred.
By five hundred, I stand corrected.
I second the corrective motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, motion carries six zero zero. Let's see. Does anyone have anything else for the First Selectmen before we move on? No. Next, we have the assessor's office. Does anyone have any suggested changes there? So I, I was looking at the two hundred dash two three nine contracted operating services, so that the proposed budget is for five thousand, but so far this year, I don't think we've expended anything yet, and there was a transfer, a two thousand transfer.
Yeah, correct, so what this is, is for personal property audits, and so really it's a, everything else, if everything else is good in the budget at the end of the year, right around this time, if there's money left, she will do audits, depending on how many she can do with that money, so by cutting her back, really, we're just, we'll do less personal audits this year, so. So we hire, there's, there's a part of it internally, but there's a part of it also externally where, well, we hire a company and they go out and, you know, random or, I don't know how it's picked, but they go out and.
But those companies do that on a contingency basis, so there wouldn't be any fee for that. So we're only talking about what, ones that she's going to do in-house.
Correct.
Do we have like a history, history of that, how many she's done and what that runs?
I know during COVID, I believe this was suspended, they weren't going house to house and doing this, so I believe the five thousand was to kind of kick it back, keep going with it.
Through three, three twenty, twenty twenty-four, we haven't done any, so.
Well, these are more done on, I mean, they're mostly done by mail, or they're, they're usually done with businesses for their business property, for the declarations they file in October, you know, those are what get all of it.
What Paul said. Outside of my, you know, we have a great assessor, Mrs. Vitaglione, so I leave her to do the assessing, but I do know the reason why there was a transfer this year, the cost of the books to appraise cars and value cars.
That's going to be at my house, right?
Is now at a per car basis, so they, for every car you have on the books, there's a certain fee they charge, and then every time another car comes in and they have to look up that car, there's an additional, additional fee for every car we look up. So the company, I believe it was MADA either bought out the company, I think now it's JD Power, and they are much more aggressive with their pricing, so that's why you noticed that line was four thousand dollars and now it's eighty-one hundred, this miscellaneous supply line.
Okay, but we're talking.
Yeah.
Contracted.
Well, I was just showing where that transfer was.
Where, okay.
So, I mean, so this, she's expecting to be covered down here, so, yeah, I think that's reasonable.
So I was thinking that we could reduce it by two thousand to a budget of three thousand, given that we're at zero, three quarters of the way through the year.
I'm sorry.
So I can just be clear, Kevin Hickory, is it your understanding that she can make up some of that in miscellaneous supplies for the books or?
Um, no, I was just speaking to why this year there was a transfer, that's all I was doing.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Just clean this up real quick, everybody.
Yes, just my concern is, so, you know, it used to be you'd buy the Blue Book service or I guess it was JD Power, and now it's kind of per car fee, and so she's, she's concerned that it's, you know, they're not going to have the money to, to evaluate various vehicles, and, you know, we generate a lot of revenue from, from making sure we're accurate with the value of the cars, so I just want to be careful that we don't limit her ability to assess the cars properly. It may cost us a lot more than the amount we're going to save by reducing that budget. That's my other concern, which is she has that resources.
But isn't the car, money, three two zero?
Yeah, two three nine, she's just listing property audits, or personal property audits, nothing else.
Yeah, personal property audits are a little different, so, but they have to be able to establish, you know, the value of a vehicle.
Yeah, but.
And they have to use this service, JD Power, PBS, and now it's, in order to have it, then it holds up in court, you have, you and I can just go online and do Blue Book and find out what a car is, but for the town to do it, they have to have, they have to have a number that is acceptable to some challenges.
I think the, the question isn't so much, do we need to do this and is it good, but where is it falling in the budget this year, given that to pay for it, she took money out of contracted inspection services and moved it over to miscellaneous supplies.
So if that's, if that's correct, then I've done, I just want to be sure, if that's what happened, then that's going to cover it, then I think it's okay. I was, I can't, I don't, I don't want to speak for her because I don't know absolutely for that money, as long as she has the ability to order the service, that's my other concern. Maybe it's fine with that two thousand.
Yeah, because at least reading the narrative, it looks like what you're talking about, the vehicle evaluation is within that miscellaneous line.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that five thousand is just for the personal property audits, but really it's a, dare I say, it's a small contingency in the assessor's office, so when they're running over on a different line, right, that's kind of where they can pull from because it's not a, you know, it's not something where they're locked into, it's kind of like, how much do we have left? Okay, we got that left, let's do this many audits, kind of value engineer it. Conversely, it goes both ways. I've seen it before where they don't spend all their, not this year, but past years, they don't spend all their, you know, miscellaneous supply line and some of the transport allowance, they'll transfer that to that contracted line and get more audits if they know they're running under, so it works both ways, and I will just say to the, to the assessor, who also teaches at the Assessor School at UConn, the professional conferences and conventions and transport allowance could be much higher, but since she's a professor there and teaches at the Assessor School, we get a couple for free, so, so, just want to give her a shout out.
Well, and Kevin, if there's something left in that line at the end of the budget year, it goes back to the general fund.
Yep.
And three thousand and eighty-something million dollar budget, I don't think is going to be that big of a.
I know it's rounding error. Yeah.
But every little bit.
But they all add up.
Yep.
And so, and, you know, my problem is, is you look at a lot of these budgets and, you know, they're going up six, seven, eight percent, and that's just not sustainable, so, you know, all those little, oh, let's build a little contingency here and there, you know, then it becomes part of their budget, and then they always find something to use it on, so, so anyhow, would anyone like to, I'll make the motion to reduce the contracted operating services line from five thousand down two thousand to three thousand.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero zero. Anyone have anything else in the assessor's office?
I just want to go on the record that I agree with Dan that we should leave miscellaneous supplies at eighty-one hundred.
Agree, we don't want to, we don't want to miss out on revenue opportunities by being penny wise and tomfoolish, as I say. So now to the tax collector's office. Let's see. I was looking at the miscellaneous supplies, and I looked just to see how far along in the budget year they are, so as of March twentieth, so almost three quarters of the year, they're only sixty-five percent through their budget, so I was, I was thinking we could cut that five hundred dollars. So what I've been trying to do is really look and say, where are we? We're three quarters of the way through the year, and unless, you know, something is, you know, already encumbered, then, you know, we should, we should be knowing what these expenses are, and if, if there's a line item that's coming in, you know, not there and it's a miscellaneous, then I feel like everywhere we can cut that would be helpful. Anyone want to make a motion to reduce the miscellaneous supplies in the tax collector's office?
Make a motion to reduce, you know, operating expenses in the tax collector's budget. Item three twenty miscellaneous supplies, probably five hundred dollars to three thousand.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, motion carries six zero zero. We're on to the building department. Wasn't a whole lot, that wasn't outside of payroll there.
What about the permit software? Is there any way to save money on that?
No, is that in this one? So I guess I'm just still looking up here, so.
Is it two sixteen?
Yeah. Two seventeen, building permit software. You know, this is another one of those where I feel like we could get into being shortsighted if we cut out software, because if we have software, then hopefully that means we can get some efficiencies on the personnel side.
Can I just speak to that?
Sure. And I, I know the staff has been a little short, and so maybe some of the.
Yes, good evening, Gary Gashel, town planner for the record. So the zoning department, building, and myself, which includes planning and wetlands, have collaborated to say we need some new permit software to track the permits that are coming in. With that, we do hope to create efficiencies, certainly in productivity. Essentially, all the data entry that's done now with every permit that comes in is done by the admin staff. Hopefully, this will alleviate the bulk of that, at least ninety percent of it, because we're looking for digital submission online as well as being able to pay for that permit online, so shifting all of that over takes a significant burden of people actually wanting to come to the counter, so there's a lot of time, I think, that's going to be saved as, and obviously the admin staff can be redirected to do other tasks, so that's the short of it now, but I'd be happy to answer any of the questions that you do have. I knew there was a question regarding buildings and structures per year, I can speak to the residential structures, and we average about sixty to sixty-five structures every decade, so that was based on the. So that was based on the last P O C D. But with COVID, that kind of changed things. So that's, I'm not sure where the census projections are now, but I'd be happy to take a look into that if the board wanted me to.
So this software is for both zoning and planning?
Zoning, planning, wetlands and building. Ideally, every permit that you currently apply for on paper will now be able to be submitted for digitally, electronically.
And if you go down there, it's like there's, like a stack of papers, you know, do you want this one, this one, this one, that one?
The, the other benefit is, is we're actually PDFing in an effort to digitize all our documents, everything that comes in the door now. So as we throw it on the scanner and it gets scanned. Part of this project also included digitizing all of our current hard copies and going completely digital. So with that, I think that will bring the town forward a couple of decades and make access to the information more accessible, particularly for the public as well, appraisers and such that utilize our, our info.
And given this is the Board of Finance, can you talk about ability to get money more quickly, like through this?
Certainly by taking online payments. We're receiving the money electronically immediately. So it's going to go into one account and be transferred right over to the town's accounts.
And then we're going to earn interest on it that much faster.
Theoretically, yes. Obviously, we do have the state fees that we have to account for.
Do you have point of date mail downstairs or no?
No, we don't. We, we do not have the current ability to take a credit card at our register downstairs. So hopefully this will, this will, obviously, we'll be able to take the credit card online and so hopefully we kind of circled and navigated having to do like a hardwire for the credit card and paying the additional fees associated with that.
If we take credit cards, we'll make sure we add the fee.
Yes.
Yeah. And then for the, the cost of the software there, that does include training and installation?
Yes, it does include approximately a week's worth of training. They're going to fly someone up here who would train our staff, including, that would include myself and the entire land use department. All the records, as I said, become available online. Our building staff will be able to pull up building plans in the field while they inspect structures, so that also is another added benefit. Hopefully, we'll tie it in with our GIS system so that we can actually create like a routing for those inspections so that we can get those guys taking our town vehicles in the shortest path, will save on fuel. So those are things that we're looking at, trying to implement in the future.
So do the inspectors have tablets for doing those field inspections?
We currently share one tablet if they would like to take it. Otherwise, they can go do their physical inspection, do a written report, and when they come back, they have to enter it into the computer, or however Dave wants them to pursue that, but yes. And then there's usually a paper copy that goes in the file as well. So there's a lot of paper that gets moved around. So if you can go to a digital platform, that, that's really where we're open to reduce paper costs and over it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to make a motion to do that, or were you about?
No, I'm okay. You convinced me.
Anything else for the building department?
I don't have anything.
Well, now I'm looking at that miscellaneous supply budget in one oh four, three twenty. So, so Kevin, in the building department, one oh four, three hundred, three twenty, miscellaneous supplies.
Three thousand?
Right, and how much have they used to date?
Twenty-two oh six.
Okay, so, okay, all right. Now they have cars.
They do have a car, so maybe they're using that to go to trains and things like that, so that's an option.
Hmm.
I know it's only five hundred bucks.
Anyone feel strongly about that? Do we, do you know whether, I was going to ask whether, do you know whether people go to training in their town cars or in their personal cars?
I don't know too, but I think it may vary depending where the train is at relative to their personal home.
All right. Up to you guys, anyone want to do anything with those since they're...
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, all right. So that's building department. Now on to one oh five. Did anyone have anything that they wanted to do there? Pretty small increase overall. So I just, as we're, you know, I hate the list this, this week, like, okay, where am I again? So total engineer in the storm water management, the original request, I think was for twelve thousand. I looked at what they had spent so far, three quarters into the year, and they'd only spent eleven thousand so far. So I think, so where are they now, storm water management? So two oh, one oh five, two hundred.
So the one thing I will say with storm water management, I was just on the phone with Mr. Bregaw, Pub Works Director who oversees engineering. We haven't had our town engineer, he's been out on military leave. He just came back a week ago. And so I just, I, I sent him a text saying, hey, how much of this twelve thousand do you need? He said twenty thousand. This is, so we have, that's not contractual, it's regulatory obligations with the state of Connecticut for the MS four storm water treatment. So he's expected to spend this, this whole amount this year.
Okay.
So the twelve thousand's kind of...
Needed if it's MS four.
There's regulatory oversight there that's needed, unfortunately, because that was a nice little...
Yeah. Any, anyone have anything else in the town engineer total? Nope. Okay. Going on to one oh six. I didn't have anything in human resources. I feel like human resources is an area, an area we were woefully understaffed in. Anyone?
The only comment that I have is that if you look at the lead sheet on it, it still has the title as director or it's a manager. And then the assistant, part-time to full-time, that thirty-eight, seven is a full-time salary? Or is it a delayed start?
It's been peeled back. It, so originally, it was a full-time salary at the fifty-eight.
Yeah.
And then first, with the first selectman, we cut it back and then it was also cut back again in the board of selectmen. So now it is a twenty-hour a week position, so it's part-time, no benefits. So that's kind of where it's, so the narrative doesn't really match what's happened to it over the last couple cuts.
Okay.
So, and in full disclosure, I put the HR department budget together, we didn't have an HR manager at the time, so I did increase the employee background checks by a thousand dollars. And I also increased miscellaneous supplies just to have, help the new HR director put some programs and things like that on. When we look at the, the background checks, we've spent a thousand dollars so far. We have the full amount encumbered. We haven't done a ton of hiring this year, so I think the three thousand is probably enough there if we want to cut that back to the three thousand dollars. And the only reason the miscellaneous supplies, I, I never used this, I always whacked the finance departments, obviously. So you'll notice mine's running a little high, but this was my little, this was my contingency in between the two departments. So I imagine we'll be spending some of this, so whether you bring them both back to the three thousand dollars and shave a couple thousand off, I think that's reasonable.
So this is employee background checks?
Correct, yep.
And you also said miscellaneous?
Correct. I think those two, you know, I think if we're running a little high on the employee background checks, we just do a little less ordering of supplies, or they come to me and I'll figure out a place for it. But between the two, I think the six thousand is enough for, you know, technical supplies of the HR office.
And the reporting structure, structure of the management position reports to you now, Kevin?
No, reports to Mr. Coming.
Still to?
Yep.
Okay.
We work hand in hand, but reports directly to Mr. Kevin.
Things work out very well.
That's what I've heard. It's nice to hear.
Okay, so, so for a motion, are we reducing both of them by a thousand?
I think, I think we can manage with that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make the motion. Motion to reduce line three fifteen of department one oh six, employee background checks and three twenty miscellaneous supplies each by one thousand dollars to three thousand dollars each.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, six, zero, zero. We're on to town clerk. It's an overall budget increase of four point eight three. I didn't have anything there. Did anyone else have anything there? No?
No.
Okay. Bloodlight Health District, I have nothing there. Information Technology. You know, I feel like IT and HR were two of the departments that were understaffed.
Denise, if I may?
Yeah.
Can we go back to town clerk?
Oh, sure.
For a second?
Get some new information?
We do, hot off the press. I think we can get by with a thousand dollars of overtime, so we can cut eight hundred and six dollars from the overtime line there.
Okay.
I know it's not, you know, a lot, but every little bit helps.
Yep. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'm going to reduce line two fourteen overtime, town clerk one oh seven, by eight thousand, six dollars to...
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred dollars.
Six cents, six dollars, eight hundred and six.
Yep.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Mrs. Galbo.
So then, on to IT.
This is where we made the big telephone transfer too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I have a few things on, on IT. I'm proposing the, the additional headcount. We start with a part-time to save on benefits and see how that works out. And then also with the training for Carmen to go from twenty-two hundred down to fourteen hundred, the same as what she had last year.
Let's, let's start with the first one.
Okay.
And then, just so we can, so we don't have to go back. So which line item are...
It's the, it doesn't have a line item. I guess it would be...
It's a new one.
It's new IT, it's the third line down under personal services.
IT engineer?
Yes.
Okay, and the board of selectmen had already reduced it down to forty-eight to fifty.
So the idea was we were cutting it back from a July one start date to about a November first, November fifteenth start date, but that was full-time benefited. So the idea is that we'd be November first starting, in November sometime start date with benefits kicking in, in the backend. So if you're proposing to make it part-time, we can also pull up the benefit slide as well and see what that does.
You know, this is one of those departments, I'm really, really concerned that we have adequate resources. You know, we had a long discussion with the IT director and he was very convincing to me, at least, the necessity of this full-time person starting. You know, he was able to delay it six months, but anything less than that, I think, will be detrimental to the town. You know, we live in this world now of cybersecurity threats and, and having our software up to date is so essential and having backups done in a timely manner. You know, and he really, you know, the supervisor, he, you know, it's overwhelming, I think, between the police station and all of the resources that they need there and everything that's going on here. It, it's, it's a lot to do. And I, I don't, I don't really want to adjust his budget if we can help it.
Okay.
I agree, based on what he said about the headcount, I would see he's going to have trouble even with the additional, with the additional person coming on that's, and the, all the additional software that we're talking about bringing on, they aren't going to have their hands full.
I think they are.
Agreed. Great. So Rich, you, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone, anything else for IT?
I had three twenty miscellaneous supplies.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
I reduce that to a, by a thousand to four thousand.
Where are they throughout the year?
Seventeen hundred spent today. They have the full amount encumbered.
The full three thousand encumbered?
Full three thousand.
Yeah. So they're a hundred percent utilized.
And if you're going to add another person...
Okay. Any, anybody, anything else for IT?
If there's one kind of, this one here, this GIS, I'm doing continued development. I see it's twenty-five hundred again. Let me just check one thing. I spent a year.
That's the online mapping, isn't it? Is that covered by something else?
You see, that amount was transferred out. I spent two hundred and forty dollars on that line in twenty twenty-three. This period, we haven't spent anything there.
I think...
I believe that, that twenty-five hundred, before the GIS line item got moved over to the IT budget, I managed the GIS budget. But that said, the twenty-five hundred was an annual recurring expense that I requested for implementation. So for the work that I couldn't do, we farmed out to tie and bond our GIS vendor, thirty-five hundred of which is an annual recurring expense for the website. So the twenty-five hundred was actually for implementation of work of developing maps and laborious tasks.
So you think it's been utilized and that's done now? Or is it...
I would say we, we're looking to bring that in-house. So starting in May, we have an intern coming on who has a background, an extensive background in remote sensing and GIS spatial work. So hopefully he'll fill the gap and I think we might be able to do it. So hopefully he'll fill the gap, and I think we might be able to do without that, as we do have in the annual licensing hosting, we pay for software, the ESRI GIS software, it's already built in there. So with that, hopefully our intern can make a go of it. But I think, I think for now, we're okay, next year may look different, I don't, not certain.
All right. Every penny counts here, so.
Although I do see a note here that the GIS brings in some revenue, since the town charges for maps, the people, that they print out, right?
Well, as we move into the digital age, unfortunately, the printing of maps, it's metal on me, the printing of maps isn't so much anymore, while we do have a fee schedule. I'm really not asked for full-size copies, it's, can I get a, just a printout from the copier, so the eight and a half by 11, it's a 50-cent copy, I think it's a dollar for color. And that's really all we're generating, any revenue, so at this point, people just prefer to create a PDF and view it on their own home computer.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. Department 109, Information Technology, line 220, GIS new and continuing development, eliminate the 2,500 dollars?
I certainly would advocate to keep money in.
Keep money in.
Obviously to have it available.
Okay.
500, do you have any thoughts? I was thinking 1,000, but yeah, 500 works, it's something that at least we needed, we could.
To decrease the amount by 1,000 to 500.
Anyone second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries, 6-0-0.
Can I ask, what do we, how much do we just cut?
2,000.
2,000, okay, to bring it back.
We left 500.
Perfect, okay.
So anything else for IT?
Were we cutting the miscellaneous supplies too, or?
They were fully utilized, I think, weren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was fully in Cumber.
Yep. Um, Registrar's.
Oh, one, one other thing that, that I brought up, when I had brought up the part-time, which I understand we needed the full-time. But in terms of the Carmen training.
Oh, right.
It went from 1,400 to 3,600, and it sounds like she's going to be pretty busy just with doing the job, then I don't know that she needs to have that kind of an increase in training.
Is that line 217?
It is.
217.
Technicals, other IT services, 218.
Okay, just wind up.
And on the IT budget, it's the one where it's licensing, hosting, support, it is the top header.
I see, Rich. Line 218.
I mean, there isn't, um.
You have to look to the narrative, it's the next last, next to last page of the narratives.
Is it on the screen here, Rich?
Yeah, yeah, others.
Hard to see, sorry guys.
Yeah, other IT services.
But the verbiage says this line covers other town IT items, not including, not included under license hosting, supporting costs and technical assistance such as IT training. For a detailed breakdown, see the worksheet. And then 218, worksheet. So Carmen RT training is just 1,400 of it.
It's a 30, all the way to the right.
Went to 3,600 from 1,400.
Yeah. For, I've been through year-end.
Is that based on any specific training, or is it just a guess, estimate?
We have that line currently.
So this is where, didn't we also have something moved in to?
The, the $23,000.
Yeah. So the, the whole thing, the whole line item, looks like it's gone up a tremendous amount, you know, 260%, but it's because of the, um.
The 24,000 dollar phone bill.
24,000 moved into it.
Yep.
But, yeah, I, if you want to make a motion, Rich.
Oh, okay. I, I make a motion to reduce other IT services, it doesn't have a line number, but it says IT training, Carmen IT training, from $3,600 to $1,400.
Second.
Any discussion?
22.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, 6-0-0. Okay, now are we through with IT?
Yes.
Okay. So on to.
Who seconded that one? Who did the second?
I did.
Oh, okay. Just writing it down just in case.
So now we are the Registrar's office, I believe, right? I didn't have anything for Registrar's, did anyone have? No, okay. Judge of probate. Didn't, I didn't have anything there, anyone? Nope. Okay. Moving on now to, um, Building Maintenance. So I was looking at the overtime budget on that one, and could you pull up where we are to date on that overtime?
Certainly, I will just say that overtime line's going up, it is due to the community center, if you remember, where currently, last year, there was a proposal to, um, what am I trying to say? So they asked for 22,000 last year as well to keep the community center open on Saturdays and Sundays. Last year, the first selectman cut it back, and this, two months ago, we made a deal with the library, Park and Rec, and Commission on Aging to split the, the $9,000 that was cut out of the budget, split it three ways, so we can continue that service. So by cutting that line, we would just, we just, you know, we'd move it to either Park and Rec Special Revenue or the library, but I, I think there's a, a want, or, or want or a need to keep the building open on the weekends.
I think that was part of the, the issue, and we were running out of, there was mu, there wasn't money left to keep the custodian there on Sundays, and we didn't want to risk having to close the library because of that. So I think it's an important.
Okay.
An important need, I would say.
All right. Anyone have anything in Building Maintenance? How are we doing on miscellaneous supplies there?
So they have an 1,800 line item for miscellaneous supplies, and they spent about $600.
I think we could cut that back a little then. Anyone want to make a motion? Anyone agree? So this would be.
What are we cutting it to?
So, um, in Building Maintenance Department, 320 miscellaneous supplies.
We're on 113?
Yeah.
Yep. They've spent 600.
How much do you want to cut it by?
Well, they've spent 600 so far, so say they might spend 1,000, why don't we cut it 800?
Okay. If they make a motion, in the maintenance of town buildings, operating expenses, item code 320 miscellaneous supplies, reduce it by 800.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. All right.
I have a question on the utilities. Um, the utilities for the Board of Ad went down this year, and this budget request goes up.
So we bid at different, before, we were bidding at different times, the town locked in at an under 10 cent per kilowatt hour, the Board of Ad was a little higher than that. When the contracts both came due at the same time, we renegotiated everybody together. So we're paying a little more, but they're paying a lot less. So that's, that's the rundown there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you want to start next time with General Government? 114?
Yep. Okay, well, we made some great progress, and, um, so you guys have tomorrow night off. And we'll be back here at 5:30 on Thursday.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.